Board of Selectmen, it's seven o'clock now. And the first item on our agenda is to review and approve minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from May 18th, 2017, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to confirm future meeting dates now. The board is set to meet again on June 19th. And then, looking at the schedule, as we're now on the first and third Mondays of every month, the July dates would be June 3rd and June 17th, but June 3rd is obviously off the table. I'm sorry, July.
July 3rd.
Apologies. July 3rd is off the table. So, why don't we circle back through Emily and Michael? And get that next date before the 17th, okay?
I'm definitely going to be out of the state from the 11th, so maybe as late as the 19th. I'm going to be in Idaho.
Okay. We can rearrange those dates. We can find out what schedules work for everybody.
How's the fourth one?
No, I'm kidding.
They might still be in here. Okay. Next item is Citizen Speak. Do we have anyone tonight for Citizen Speak? Okay. Seeing that we have none, our fifth item on the agenda is a discussion with Colette Phillips' Communications. And we have Tom Nutley of Colette Phillips' Communications, who's going to come in and highlight the benefits of our partnership in the firm's experience. So, come on up, Tom.
Would you like me to sit down? Sure. I'm usually on the other end of the mic, talking to the media rather than town officials, but we're very happy to be chosen by Milton to do this. We have a lot of experience dealing with municipal government, dealing with NGOs and that sort of thing. And Colette and I, I hate to say it this way, I think we have about 60 years of combined experience, both as journalists and as PR people. I started working for Colette in 2005, and we did something when Tom Manino was mayor. It was an initiative for a new economy, where we just dealt with city government, we dealt with the different powers that be and corporations, and brought everyone together, and we were very successful. So, we've been doing municipal stuff since then, you know, inner-city capital commission with Steve Grossman, Mass Growth Capital Corporation, I think that's what the initials stand for, with Milton. I've been working with you, I've been working with Mike, done a lot of things, some of which aren't highly noticeable, but I've been doing things online, like tweeting on the Milton account. I think that number's in the dozens. Did something, stuff over the weekend, stuff today. Been dealing with the media, like Fred, who's very easy to deal with. I shouldn't say that, then, that'll go to your head, right? But it'll get tough for me. But, you know, I've been reaching out to the people I know at the Boston Globe, talking with David Johnson at the Milton Times, trying to establish relationships. We've talked about different things we'd like to highlight in town, and different initiatives. And one thing that I'm looking forward to doing, that we've talked about, is getting even more directly involved with some of the online communications, whether it's the Facebook page, or even, you know, the Town of Milton website. I mean, I am, my background, I mean, I got into journalism because I liked to write. And even now, you know, I do a lot of writing on the side, and I would, I think that's a great way to reach out to the community, let them know truly what's going on, let them know what the town's doing, is, you know, to get, for me and Colette, to get more involved doing that, you know, content for the website, putting forth, you know, information of that nature. In addition, Colette has a lot of experience dealing with diversity and diversity issues, which I think, you know, considering that, you know, there's a fair amount of minorities in Milton, that that's something that we can deal with too, and just, you know, bring more representation to the fore when it comes to that. I probably have a lot more to say, but if you have any questions for me, I'd love to...
I just, I want to thank you first for coming in here. And I think the intention by the town administrator and the board to bring Colette Phillips' Communication on was one to do several roles. One, that you just mentioned, talk about our diverse town.
Right.
How special we are.
Yes.
It really highlights a lot of positives that other towns can't speak of. And I don't think we've spoken enough about it. You guys, with your experience, have the ability to convey that in a positive manner.
Yes.
More so than that, I think that we, as a town, are growing. Maybe not by numbers, per se, in terms of households, but in terms of what we're dealing with on an everyday basis. We don't have the luxury to be able to hire a full-time communications director and pay benefits and a pension, whereas we can hire a consultant who can help us shape and organize, whereas we probably won't need one long-term.
Sure.
But give us an indication of how it is to be done in a town like ours, so that we can get out good messaging, which the taxpayers deserve.
Right.
Fair messaging. And I think that, as you mentioned, working with the local papers, the Milton Times...
Sure.
Working with people who do business in town, who like, you know, to get information or convey information as well, is only a positive.
Right.
And I think this should be viewed as a partnership, and one that I know our board and our town administrator take seriously, because I think in the long-term, it's going to benefit people.
Thanks.
So, in short, I'll let my colleagues speak as well, but I think, I think what your firm and Colette bring to the table is something substantial that is going to help us, as a team, grow, and also convey positive messaging that taxpayers deserve.
Absolutely.
Anything? Go ahead.
Well, nice to meet you, Tom.
Nice to meet you.
We had a...
Person?
Yes. Mike and I had a long conversation with Tom about some airplane issues a week or so ago, so, nice talking with you and meeting you tonight, Tom. I think as we go forward over the next, you know, few weeks, anyway, we'll probably have a lot of work for you on the Henry's project, to try to move forward and get some messaging out, tell people what's happening with that, and just make that more publicly known. So, I can see specific projects over the next few weeks and months that will need your help on.
And Mike's talked a little bit about that.
I'm sure we'll benefit from having your expertise on...
Yeah. I mean, that's what my background is. For 20 years, I was a journalist, so I was dealing with towns and, you know, communications people, and actually started out covering town meetings and evening governing boards for regional newspapers around here. So, yeah, that's something I do, and I'm actually looking forward very much to doing that, being the point person, getting the information out, helping with messaging, dealing directly with the media, and helping them, you know, connect with all of you, so...
And I was even thinking for Henry's, even with the general public, just letting people know what's happening with that project.
Right.
What the latest developments are.
Right. And there's many ways to do that, as I said.
Yes.
There's the Facebook page, there's the town website, there's tweeting, there's any number of ways that I can help you communicate that. So, I look forward to that.
Thank you.
I think that I'm obviously the newest member here, but I do come from 10 years of being a department head in a very high-profile agency in town.
Yes.
And the key words, you said two key words, which were essential to me, or critical to me. One is obviously communication, and one of the things that often that we hear already, and me as the newest member of the board, is people want to be communicated to, they want to have, so they want to hear things. If you can, if you can get things out quickly, and they know about it beforehand, or they have an understanding of it, they'll grasp it better. The second thing is the diversity aspect of it. I worked a little bit into your background, and I'm very happy that you come from a diverse background.
Yes.
We are, as the chair said, a very special place. It is very rare that you'll go anywhere in this country to find a community that has a beautiful quality of life like this, that has over 11,000 students every day in public and private schools, going to school here, over 150,000 cars a day commuting through here, almost 30,000 residents as well, and 8,000 households. And that really, in today's day and age, demands that we communicate things out. And I know this weekend, there were some people who wrote some things on social media, questioning this. This is a big operation. Even for me, coming, being a department head for 10 years, I find this very humbling when you first get here. You need to sit and listen.
Yes.
And I give Mr. Danny, and I said this when I ran, and I said this when I won, that my view, my role as a selectman is to support you as the town manager, and what you do here. And I think that's what all of us do here. And I think this was a proactive, and for those who are the naysayers, or try to align this to like, the current override framework, I think you'll be able to help us with this, because this is a community that is very, very unique, and people want to live here. In a recent meeting with Stephen Lynch, our congressman, who I think very dearly of, he said, you know, "A lot of people move out of South Boston today, but the big thing is they all want to move to Milton."
Yes.
And they want to move here because it is very unique. And it is a very, we have our issues, and we have our problems, and we deal with them. And I think you will be able to help us with that. And I'm very pleased that you're here. And I think that the citizens of this town, if they have faith in their elected officials, then they'll have faith in this decision. And I think in the long run, they'll see, for the benefit to each of them, why this decision was made. So, welcome aboard, and I thank you very much.
I appreciate that. I mean, part of what I'm here for is for transparency, and sometimes could even be like, "You really need to get back to that reporter." You know, so, my job is to facilitate things, and I think real communication and true communication helps everything. That's what I'm here to do.
Can I just add one comment to that, the word diligence? Tom and I have a phone call every morning at 10:00 a.m., and there'll be things that we're working through, some feel-good stories through some of the departments, or some of the specific employees, and I'll reach out to the department head and say, "Hey, what do you think of doing a story on that? Why don't you reach out to Tom?"
Right.
They've already been in touch, right? So, Tom has formed a relationship with each of the department heads in the last month or so. There's an open line of communication with them, and that's good, because, as you know, we get busy up here, and we don't have time to tell people everything that's going on. So, I appreciate the work that he's doing with each of the department heads, and even, you'll see some of the feel-good stories coming out, and I think it's...
Yeah. Just to follow up on that as well, I understand too, that not everything will be positive. And there will be days, as we see in the national news and the internationals...
Sure.
There will be days when something tragic or really negative will happen.
Absolutely.
And there'll be those who will hold their breath and think, "Oh, no, what can I do?" Or what's, and those are also the days where I think you're really going to help people, again, realize what's so great about this community, and how much, I've always said, apathy never survives in this town, because no matter what the issue is, or what the problem is, people will step up and care about it, so...
Great.
Thanks.
Well, I absolutely love doing this, so, that's why I'm here. Well, thank you.
Will you be doing any work with the schools? Is that contemplated at this point, or is that too premature?
Yeah, so the superintendent has talked to all of her administrators, and they have some stories that Tom is working on.
Great, yeah. And I've spent time on the phone communicating with Mary Gormly, I'm getting her email blast every Thursday, so we're definitely in touch, and talked about some issues and things we could, you know, promote, so...
She's a woman too, as well. You may know, a former Goldwater partner, Mara Downs, who's been around a long time.
Yes.
Mara's very good.
Yeah. I haven't talked to her, but I used to work with her late husband, David Girloff, when I worked at the Herald, so, yeah, I know of Mara. She is very good, so...
Well, thanks, Tom, for coming in and joining us. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
I might want to stick around for a few minutes before I go, because I enjoy these things.
We'd love to have you, so please do. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll be talking to you again soon.
Absolutely.
Okay. The next agenda item, if we could have Bill come on up, Bill Clark to the table, our town planner. It's a regulatory agreement for Woodmere and Brushhill.
Good evening. You have before you three documents by, it's concerning Woodmere, so it would come from Northland Residential. It's raising the value of the homes just a little bit. It's all based on the new HUD income numbers for affordable housing. The new numbers should start July 1st, and they start 54,750, 54,750 for a single person. Family of four would go, 78,150. Each one of them has jumped about $4,000. So, the documents that are before you, just take into account the raise in accepted salaries.
Okay. Anybody have any questions related to this updated information?
I just want to ask, the memo says that the units are under construction. Do you know anything more than that, Bill? How far along they are, or when they're expected to...
Two of them should be ready by fall.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah.
Oh, that's soon, okay.
The foundations are poured for all four. The first two were scheduled to be in the fall.
Good.
Yeah, I was up there too, so they're definitely framed and moving. They're all closed.
It's flying.
Well, we have a motion before us.
I'll move that we approve and sign the amended regulatory agreement between the Town of Milton and Northland Residential Corporation for Woodmere at Brushhill.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
None.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
It was quicker than a fooshot, for you.
That was very quick. Didn't hurt either. The next item on our agenda is the approval for Canada Day proclamation. So, to give a little background, two residents of Ontario, Canada, a husband and wife, Arthur Milns and Allison Bogey, reached out to the town to request us to participate in a special Canada 150 project. They requested that Milton provide a proclamation for this year's Canada Day, July 1st, 2017, which is also the 100th anniversary of the enactment of their constitutional act in 1867. Their town, Kingston, Ontario, was the first capital in the United Canada's, as well as home to Canada's first and founding Prime Minister, Sir John, excuse me, I lost that.
McDonald.
McDonald.
McDonald. Apologize. I got a little quick with my finger. So, I'm going to read the proclamation before we make a motion, just so we can see it. It would say, "Whereas Milton, Massachusetts, is the birthplace of the 41st President of the United States, the Honorable George Herbert Walker Bush, a matter that gives great pride to all citizens of Milton regardless of party. And whereas, during his vice presidency and presidency, George H.W. Bush developed a particularly close relationship, both personal and in all matters of international and continental public policy, with the 18th Prime Minister of Canada, the Honorable M. Brian Mulrooney. And whereas, one of the greatest legacies of the two visionary leaders for the United States and Canada is the 1991 treaty combating the scourge of acid rain that plagued both countries, a fact now recognized, for example, by Prime Minister Mulrooney, in retirement, being Canada's greatest, greenest, excuse me, maybe greatest as well, Prime Minister. And whereas Milton is located in the proud Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in our state, like America itself, has benefited greatly in its past, and will sow today and the future from her positive relations with Canada. And whereas, the great Sir Winston Churchill even described the relations between Canada and the United States as a model for all world nations. And whereas, on July 1st, 2017, Canada will be marking her 150th anniversary of nationhood." So, we have...
So, when this first came in, I, you know, I really kind of questioned it, because it was just from a private resident, but Emily Martin did a lot of research, and was in touch with the people who requested this, Mr. Milns and his wife, Ms. Bogle, and did a lot of work on this. So, thank you, Emily, for all the follow-up that you did, so we could check this out and make sure it was all legit. But it turned out that it was, and Milton being the birthplace of President Bush, I had a little role in the plaque that we have in front of the Bush birthplace over on Adam Street many years ago, so I'm always happy to see his name come across.
That's great.
Was, are they carrying this up there? Are they going to bring this up there themselves? Are we sending, how are we...
We're going to mail it up.
To the Prime Minister?
If you want to send it, no, it's...
I thought they'd invite us up for lunch.
Listen, if, just a little, one, the police department was 100 years old in 1990, we have, I think, the seventh oldest police department. My dad was chief, and he and President Bush were both in the Navy in World War II. And through Tom Flatley, the late Tom Flatley, who my dad was close with, they invited President Bush to come here, to mark the 100. He couldn't do it. But if you're ever in the library at the police station, you'll see there's several pictures of the whole case dedicated to President Bush. My mother and my father, and I think 12 or 15 members of the department, were invited to the White House as his guests for two days.
Wow.
Because he was born here in 1990. And they shared a friendship, they were right back and forth, and it's pretty cool that that happened.
There's a lot of meaning, obviously, and even more times than we thought.
And I did not go, I was a young officer then, and figured, well, my father and my mother are going, so it was a lottery, but I didn't, but when he came here on that, in...
August of 97.
Yes, I was on the, did the advance detail for his people. Jimmy Mullin was the MC, was that, I think was the MC that night?
He was on the committee, yeah, he was the chair of the committee, also, yes.
And I stood behind the stage, and at the end, Secret Service agent came up and said to me, "You're Richard Wells, Jr.?" And I said, "Yes." He said, "President wants to meet you," because of my father, because of that meeting back in 1990. So, this is very, very good that we're doing this, and...
Well, we may have to send you to Canada.
Well, my father-in-law, my, I'm sitting here, look at this, I said this to Michael before you came in, Pauline's dad is from St. John's, Newfoundland, which is the last province to enter Canada after World War II. We went for Canada Day, she went every day, and all, they went every summer of their life, but 2003, that's their 4th of July, it's as big as our 4th of July.
It's really big, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Canada Day's a big deal.
So, we'll have to have a phone conversation with them. I don't think they know how big this really is, even for us.
We also have...
They want to fire us up?
We also have, in the materials, a letter that President Bush, 41, has sent to, I guess, to Mr. Milns for this file and this time capsule that they're putting together, so, and I think he suggested, one of the emails, that we should send a copy of our proclamation to President Bush up in Kennywood Port, so, I think we should do that.
That's great.
Walk us through it.
Yep.
There you go.
So, I'll move that we approve and sign our proclamation commemorating the 150th anniversary of Canada, and its first Prime Minister, John McDonald, and to declare July 1st, 2017, as George Herbert Walker Bush, Right Honorable Brian Mulrooney, Canada Day in the Town of Milton.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go. That's great news, and I'm...
Good work.
Very pleased to be a part of that. We have now before us a discussion about the approval to potentially approve the Milton Superior Officers Association memorandum of agreement. Michael?
Sure. So, bequested the tasks of negotiating the contract for the Milton Superior Officers Association with my predecessor, Anne Marie Fagan, and Chief King, as well as Paige Appolito, Assistant TA-HR Director. Happy to announce, we came to an agreement on May 11th with the Superior Officers Union. I think it's a very fair and just deal. Lot of back and forth, we probably met about 10 or 15 times. So, what the Superior Officers will be receiving is 2.5% increase on their base wages in each of the three fiscal years. Obviously, we're approaching the second fiscal year in less than a month's time, so, there'll be some retroactive pay that goes along with that. Additionally, there is some night and weekend differential adjustments to their pay that was part of their bargaining, collective bargaining. And the last item of note is, there are 13 Superior Officers. 10 of those officers would one day be allowed to enter the Superior Officers program. They have decided to forego that in their sick leave buyback for a one-time 2% base pay increase in their 26th year.
I think that's very fair. I think that, obviously, they had to give something up to get, so it was a true bargain, bargaining session, I should say. So, I know we have a motion in front of us.
All right. I'll move that we approve and sign a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Superior Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just, I know it was a lot of work, Mike, so, it's good to get this one done, and you've got a couple more in the works, so, this is, this is good to get this done before the end of the fiscal year.
Appreciate it. I do want to thank their team, Michael Collins, Brian Cherry, Brendan Douglas, Krista Murphy. They're very, very good people to work with. It was, it was, it was great, you know? It was, business is business, but, you know, it was very, very good negotiations. I just want to thank them for their work with it, yeah.
Well, thank you again, we appreciate it.
Good people do a great job. I mean, hats off to them.
Good. Thank you. We have some boards and committee appointments.
We've got a vote.
All right, apologize. Let's take a step back.
We made the motion, we seconded it.
Okay, so, we made the motion, and it was seconded, so, seeing how there isn't any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Apologize. Now, we'll get on to boards and committee appointments.
You want to split these next few up?
Yeah, so tell me how you...
First one is for the Council on Aging Board of Directors.
You do nine and a half.
Sure. Okay. So, I'll move that we appoint Kathleen Lavery of 115 Governor's Road as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to serve through June 2020, and to appoint Natalie Foltz of 61 Franklin Street, Deborah Neely of 23 Russell Street, and Roberta Larry of 36 Elliott Street as associate members of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to serve through June 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next board and committee appointment is for the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Just to point, a note on this, this committee was formed immediately after the attacks of 9/11. It did not exist prior. And as of today, it is one of the only, I think it's under 10 in the entire Commonwealth, all 351 cities and towns, fully certified LEPC in the Commonwealth. And you can see just by the number of names I'm about to read here, it's very inclusive of just about every entity of both, not just government, but private entities as well within this, within the community. So, proposed motional point, Bernard Lynch of 451 Central Avenue, Nancy Pasani of 40 Highland Street, Mary Ann Sullivan of 10 Wall Night Park, Mark Williams of 114 Elm Street, Thomas McCarthy of 629 Randolph Avenue, Walter McDermott of 95 Clop Street, Joseph Prondak of 525 Canton Avenue, William Ritchie of 525 Canton Avenue, Robert Mallett of 525 Canton Avenue, Michael Lynch of 451 Central Ave., Brian Linehan of 515 Canton Avenue, Caroline Cincella of 525 Canton Avenue, John King of 40 Highland Street, Paul Hopkins of 87 Marav, Jay Hackett of 177 Center Street, Christopher Graziosi of 111 Brook Road, Quincy, John Grant of 515 Canton Avenue, Margaret Gibbons of 25 Gal Road, Brian Doherty of 515 Canton Avenue, Paige Appolito of 525 Canton Avenue, Michael Dennehy of 525 Canton Avenue, William Clark of 525 Canton Avenue, Declan Carberry of 199 Reedsdale Road, Edward J. Villard of 36 Alwick Road, number 4 Quincy, and Charles Caputo of 40 Highland Street to the Local Emergency Planning Committee to serve through June of 2018.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next board and committee appointment is the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Committee.
You do 11, I'll do 12.
I'll move that we appoint Matthew P. Keswick of 76 Buckingham Road to the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Pilot Committee to serve through September 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
I know this was your recommendation, David, and I think he is a very good candidate for this committee, and this is, this is now going to be fully staffed, and I think your group is going to do a lot of good work.
Yeah, thank you. It is fully staffed now, with five members, and we're ready to go to work, and we'll have a meeting, our next meeting, very soon, now that we are staffed, once Matt gets sworn in. And, you know, we as a group, we have our Payment in Lieu of Taxes policy now, as a town. We intend to meet with each of the nonprofits and form a better partnership, and to talk about how we can work with each other, to help each other out in the town, you know, long-term. you know, long-term. I think that it's very important that the relations are good and that each of us know what we do for each other every day and try to find ways to help each other. So Matt, I can speak for him. He served on the Board of Trustees at Bridgewater State College, so he has expertise in negotiating in a pilot program. He does know a lot about state government, having worked in the governor's office for a number of years. So I think he brings a diverse background to our committee to help us out. So, any other discussion?
No, I think Matt's a welcome addition. Again, just the doors that you opened, Katie, to the hospital, you know, bringing me up to meet the board up there. I know Richard's going to take me out to meet the Curry College folks.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Mr. Zulus's relationship with Milton Academy. I think we're really going to make some headway into forming these partnerships, and I look forward to Matt's addition to the team.
It's a good, strong group of people willing to help, so we appreciate that. Okay, so let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 12. Max Ullin Skating Wink?
Yep.
Our proposed motion will point William Clark Jr. of 525 Canton Avenue, David T. Burns of 24 Garfield Road, Kevin B. Crissom of 62 Coodland Circle, Peter Mullin of 36 Edward Avenue, Claire F. Keating of 28 Holland Street, and Alan Lada, the Commercial Skating Club of 36 Hunt Drive, Stoughton, Mass, to the Max Ullin Skating Wink Lease Committee to serve through May of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number 13 on our agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Board, for having me here tonight. I don't want to steal anyone's thunder. I know some of you were in attendance yesterday, but I'd like to send my well wishes to all the Milton High School seniors who graduated yesterday, and for that matter, any graduates in our town, whatever public or private school they attend, high school or college. Should be very proud of your accomplishment. Look forward to doing a lot of good things in our town, for our town, and in life in general. So congratulations to all the graduates. A pretty unique thing happened. There were some letters addressed to the board last week from the middle school. The middle school letters have come in. I've never seen anything like that before, but I think it's pretty neat. Ben McCormick from Severian Brothers, Daniel Cherry from Pierce, and Hannah Andrews from Pierce each came in with a different subject matter. Ms. Andrews wanted recycling barrels put throughout the town in more strategic places or just put in places where they currently aren't. Mr. Cherry talked about a ban on tobacco, and Mr. McCormick was looking for the hours for 7-Eleven to be expanded. Stuff that could hit this board at one point in time, but I think it's great that this group of teenagers is thinking outside the box and trying to make our town better than it already is. So pretty unique, and I'm sure some of you have seen it before, but my 22 years of government, I've never really been engaged by middle school students, so it was encouraging.
Yeah, I think no question. I mean, anytime you get kids that are going to be active players in trying to better our community, it's certain that good things are going to happen. We've seen it before, but, you know, whether it be a Boy Scout troop leader taking on a project or a leader from, a young leader from the temple doing a project. But we've had a lot of kids who have had a willingness to improve their community, and it's nice to see that we have such an active group, and I think that they all want to be a part of. I think they also notice that this administration and this board takes a very serious role in trying to be as inclusive as possible. And I think that it is now, I think, again, when we talked about bringing on Colette Phillips, it's gotten people's attention, more so about the town and what's happening about the town, which only is going to make us better. Debate makes us better, you know? When people talk about things, you'll get better conclusions. So with that all said, it's great that now kids are taking notice, you know? And they can have our jobs someday. There's already a couple in the waiting.
They can be your biggest critic, right?
Yeah, that's great.
They have great ideas.
Well, maybe they'll start asking us some questions when we go in to get a coffee someday. It wouldn't surprise me, which would be great. So, thank you.
Yeah. We took a ride down to Hingham High School today, myself, Mr. Warner, and Ms. Smith from Sustainable Milton. Scott Devlin from Milton High School joined, myself, and Tom McCarthy. Hingham High has done a really good job with capturing solid waste in their building. It's a model. They've won a Green Ribbon Award.
Inside the building, inside the facility itself?
Inside the building, yeah. It's led by the soon-to-be Principal Rick Swanson down there. It's something to behold. The 1,200 students, they just had their graduation, so we saw about 900 students with the seniors gone. But just what they do in the cafeteria and throughout the building to maintain a green building, it's pretty impressive. We all took notes. Mr. Warner and Ms. Smith were part of Sustainable Milton. They were the ones that brought us down there. They started in 2007, I believe, when they started, but it's, they capture every type of stream in the cafeteria. There's a bucket for food scraps. There's a bucket for paper. There's a bucket for plastics. It's impressive. So hopefully, we can take some of that back to the town and model that in our school system or even in this building, you know?
Do you know if there's any cost savings associated with it with the solid waste contract?
Yeah, so Mr. Swanson said they had a 10-yard dumpster in the front and two 6-yard dumpsters in the back that were emptied three times a week. They got rid of one of the six 6-yard dumpsters, and they converted that to recyclables. It's about $750 a week they're saving just by not having that third 6-yard dumpster picked up three times a week. So there's something very quantifiable to it.
Yeah, that's worth looking into, yes.
Yeah, and there's all sorts of activities they do with the sports teams where, you know, the football team will stand at the recycle barrel and make sure that the stream that goes into it properly goes into it, and there's awards given out. It's very interactive. It's pretty dynamic, but it's a model for the state. So Hingham High really, really has it figured out. I know Scott Devlin's been working hard with a lot of people up at the high school to come up with some recycling programs, and they showed us recharging water stations where you don't, you know, you take Emily's bottle there, and you don't go through plastic bottle after plastic bottle. There's just a charging station, and you just refill your bottle.
I just saw one of those somewhere.
Yeah, it's impressive.
I came, you're right. I'd never seen anything like it. I just saw one.
One of them has a counter that says, you know, if she fills her five times and I fill mine four times, that's nine plastic bottles that you didn't have to produce or recycle.
Really?
Yeah, it's impressive. So it's a model, and I know Scott's going to take a lot of what he learned back to Milton High School and continue to do all the good work they're doing with it. So it was nice to see what other towns are doing. Rick Swanson said if there's, he'd like to take a visit up here to see what we're doing and maybe trade some ideas and-
That's great.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. So it was impressive. Assistant Town Planner Laura Mazur is her name. She starts on June 14th. I know she's been to one planning board meeting already, and I believe she's coming on June 8th as well. So just want to welcome her. She'll be a great addition to the town. Many qualified candidates, as I said, but yeah, Lauren, Lauren is, you'll be very impressed.
Is she on a impressive resume?
Yeah.
You heard of her resume?
Yeah, no question.
So we'd like to welcome her on the 14th. Thanks to Dave Perdius, Tom McCarthy, all their groups, and Sunrise Scavenger, we started putting recycling barrels in the parks and playgrounds this past weekend. So it is a work in progress with trying to figure out operationally when we need to empty them, how we need to empty them. But the idea is to capture most of that stuff at the playgrounds and parks, which are recyclables, which we're currently not. So thank you to everyone. We're obviously first weekend through it. It was a decent weekend. This weekend looks to be very good weather-wise, so we'll stay on top of it and hopefully start to capture some more stuff into the proper recycling streams at the baseball parks. And that was, that was something that we've heard, the board has probably heard several times as to why there aren't-
We solve it ourselves, like why aren't the recyclables there?
Right, yeah. So it's the beginning. Yeah, we're working our way through it, but-
And like you have then, since you got in your L E S, and I think that that's crucial.
It's proactive.
Yeah, proactive.
And it's not going to be perfect the first couple of weeks, you know?
Look at it. It's just, life is short. You only get, you know, so much time to affect change, so you're clearly maximizing-
Yeah, we put them in what we thought were strategic positions. They might not be the optimum place, or they might need an extra barrel or two, but we'll work through that. And, you know, Sunrise is very good to give us the barrels on such short notice. So I haven't got a report back as to what we diverted, but it's, everything's a win, so.
Great.
Yeah. Just a couple, a couple of quick things. David and I went to meet Sean Cronin, who's the State Director of Local Services. Again, we missed out on that Community Compact grant. So we just basically wanted to have a conversation with him, introduce ourselves to him, and find out what's in the pipeline. He was a great resource. Tasked me with doing more with my department heads to look for stuff. I know the Police Department does a very good job at looking for grants, but I think there's a lot of stuff out there that the town could take advantage of. He pointed us in multiple directions. Having said that, I'd like to thank the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and the DPW. We were awarded the $3,500 2017 Urban and Community Forestry Challenge Grant on Friday. So thank you to Commissioner Roy and Secretary Beaton and the Baker Administration. That's another $3,500 we can use towards-
For trees?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's big. Any amount of money is big, and I think that to follow up on our meeting with Sean Cronin, I think that we've developed a lot of good relations, both you and I, in our past lives and with this current administration, that, you know, I think that we'll get some good opportunities, but we'll have to put in the good work to ensure that some of these grants are properly written so that we can obtain some good opportunities, because there's a lot of them out there. And I think that meeting with Sean, he even opened our eyes to many other places. There's a lot of money out there, and that's what we intend to do is go after it.
It's great. It's a great meeting. I often get these, and I really, really appreciate them. This was dropped off. Mary Ann Sullivan, the Director of the Council on Aging, they do what they do every day, and oftentimes they get unnoticed or they're not looking for the appreciation. But I feel like I have to read this one. It's from Joyce Reynolds. Dear Director and Staff, how can I ever thank you for all the things you have done for me? Getting me to all the hospitals and doctors' offices has helped me so much. The wonderful people in the office and your drivers, Joe and John, have been so great to me. I don't know what in God's name I would do without your excellent service. God bless you all, Joyce Reynolds. So again, I think these are very worthy of stuff that's going on in the town that really needs to take notice, that the work that's being done over there in Walnut Street is being noticed by the people that they're helping. And I just want to make sure that the viewing audience knows what goes into a day's work over there and the appreciation that comes from it, so.
Mary Ann's an avid watcher. I'm sure she's at home watching this right now.
Yeah, but I think that's very special, and I'm sure there's more that come in, but that one caught my eye, so I figured it's, it's very relevant.
That was very nice.
Yeah.
I want to go back to the trees for a minute. Even though it's 3,500, it's not a bigger amount. That's a good start for the first- is this, it's at least the first time recently we've gotten it, or is it the first time we've ever gotten that grant?
I think it's the first time we've ever gotten that grant, yeah.
That's good. That's good.
Which is great news. It's a start.
Yeah, I just see someone saying Shade Tree Advisory Committee Chair, who was very excited that we were getting that funding, so any bit helps with trees. The more shade trees we can plant, the better.
Yeah.
We putting 3,500 against it? Is that what I saw in the, what's the challenge?
I think it's federal, and then the Baker Administration matches it, so, yeah. Great work. Peggy Chow and the Shade Tree Advisory Committee are as diligent as any board or committee in the town, so that's a nice-
They're doing good work.
Very good work.
They're doing great work. Right, it's great news.
Yep. Just one last thing. DPW Director, we're going to have a second interview tomorrow. We should be naming the successor late week. Obviously, the appointment, current appointment ends on June 30th, so we need to get everything moving so that it's seamless. So by the end of this week, we should know who the next DPW Director is.
It's been quite a thorough process.
Yes, yeah. Over 30 applicants. We interviewed the final six last week, and we'll see where tomorrow takes us, but some very, very qualified candidates.
Are you satisfied, Mike, that we've got a good pool for the final six?
Yes, yeah. Very good pool, yep. Former, former, former high-ranking official, so.
That's good.
Yeah, excellent.
That's great. That says something about-
Yeah. So a lot of DPW institutional knowledge sitting around the table, so it's good.
Right.
That's all I have.
Well, thanks for your update. That was quite a bit, so thanks, and obviously keep up the good work. I'd like to say that I, you know, we won't let it get to your head, but I've been approached by many department heads who have said that the morale here has been the best it's been in forever. So continue your great work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so now we have the Chair's Report. So Mary Ann Sullivan gets a double whammy tonight. I just want to thank her. I spoke to the Council on Aging, a nice group of seniors a week ago on a Thursday morning. They had coffee and muffins, and they were very welcoming to me. Got to talk to some old friends and meet some new friends and answer some tough questions about the upcoming vote for the override. I thought it went very well. I think I was able to give them, you know, kind of an update on what's been going on around town, what to expect as we move forward around town, and, you know, our commitment to the Council on Aging itself and Mary Ann and her staff, and how much we value them as employees, and we value what they do every day. As our seniors, as they get older, they're still as active, if not more active now, and it's our responsibility to keep supporting departments like the Council on Aging because, you know, we have seniors that live in this town that expect services, and they deliver. So first of all, I want to thank her for that and that opportunity. I know, Michael, you'll get an opportunity to speak to them sometime in the future. I actually took your spot, so I was thankful for that.
I'm on June's docket.
You're on June's docket. You didn't get far. That's great. Good news. You'll enjoy it.
Great.
I want to also thank the Parks Department for the Eddie Baker Fishing Tournament. First off, I want to publicly wish Eddie a healthy return. For those who don't know, Eddie took a fall at the Red Sox game and broke the kneecap that he broke the year before. So he's now in rehab at Braintree Rehabilitation. I know he's okay with me telling people that. So I know he's anxious to get out of there and get back to his normal life, and there were a lot of concerned people, as was I, being his neighbor and friend. So Eddie, you'll probably see this on tape, but we wish you the best of health and look forward to getting you back hiking and playing tennis and doing walks around Turner's Pond. But back to that fishing tournament, again, a big success. The Parks Department should be commended. They get a huge amount of young kids and adults out there with families, and it's just an enjoyable event. It's a typical Milton event where people come by the droves and enjoy the company and look for the big fish that they don't catch. But they do catch quite a few. I don't have the winner in front of me. Do you happen to know?
I don't, but Alex Dennehy was quite disheartened that he was, he got shut out.
Shut out completely?
Shut out completely, but he will be back next year. He said it was the equipment.
Pall bait?
Yeah.
You got pall bait?
Yeah, but I heard one, I heard-
It was the equipment.
Yeah, it was the equipment. One young fellow caught, female caught 30, I heard someone caught 36 fish.
Really?
That was the-
That's awesome.
Is that a record?
The rumor at Mary C. Lane. I haven't confirmed it with Mr. Perdius, but-
We'll have to get the name so that we can announce the name next week.
Only 650.
We'll have to do that, you know?
I will do that, yeah.
Emily, if you could make a note just to remind us, because I'd love to be able to announce the winners, both the male and the females, and, because I think it's a, it's a fun event that everybody looks forward to every year.
Well, I didn't know about Eddie having taken that fall, so I'm sorry to hear that, but best wishes to Eddie for a speedy recovery.
Absolutely. Good news, once again, and we're not going to get tired of saying this because it's going to keep happening, but the girls' outdoor track team won the outdoor All-Star Championship, state championship, once again. So it never gets old. Saw a couple of them at graduation the other day. They'll be going on to some pretty good schools. I know that Colette O'Larry-
Yes.
Going on scholarship to UMass, but regardless of whether you're on scholarship or not, they all play a role in attaining that state championship, and they should be commended. They're going to go down as arguably one of the greatest, if not the greatest, girls' track teams ever in the state of Massachusetts. Really incredible. Let's see here. I also have more sports news. I'm like a sports page tonight. The first, well, the new Little League baseball field at Cunningham was the first All-Star game, their first game all year, was played there this Saturday to a huge crowd, enormous crowd. They totally renovated the entire field, long time coming. And it looks absolutely beautiful. And so congratulations to the Milton American League Board and their sponsors and everybody involved in that, because it was a beautiful town event. I was over there for a little while, and they had all kinds of events going on, and hot dogs and hamburgers, and people of all ages supporting them, so. But not to be overshadowed, the girls' softball program, I want to mention that. They have a brand-new scoreboard down at the high school. They fundraised for that. That program is incredible, so, you know, they need to have, you know, their kudos as well. It's, that's a program that my old gym teacher, Mr. Fred, Jim Frederickson, would appreciate right now as the, as I'm sure we'll have plenty of great softball players moving forward. And let's see, that's about all I have right now. Members' updates?
Want to mention Memorial Day as well? You want to, just because the three of us were there?
Yeah, yeah, Memorial Day. First of all, I'm glad you mentioned that, Richard. Thank you. We had an absolutely tremendous, tremendous day Memorial Day. I want to thank Barbara Martin for her role in organizing. Kevin Cook and Al Williams from the Veterans Department, Frank Stout from the American Legion.
Teraz.
Yeah, we just had so many people, but the color guard from the USS Constitution took part in it. Our police and fire color guard took part in it, the chorus from the high school, the band from the high school, our keynote speaker, Dr. Holmes from the Naval, US Naval College, was absolutely tremendous. It was just an unbelievable day with a huge crowd. I just, for a cold day, we got quite a turnout, and it's just a tribute to how beautiful that cemetery is. And with Teraz Desmond running that, we're just so fortunate, I got to tell you. That is, we talked about it the other day. It's got to be the most beautiful cemetery in the Commonwealth, and we're so fortunate. The Board of Cemetery Trustees, they're active and involved, and it's just, it's incredibly professionally run. So I was humbled and honored to take a part in that ceremony, joined by my colleagues, and, you know, I just find it to be just one of those days that we can reflect on all those that gave their life to, for our freedom, and it was just really special. And that's it. Any other updates, member updates?
I just want to report that two weeks ago, I went to the regional selectmen's meeting at the MMA. The topic turned out to be all about marijuana, so it was- at the MMA. The topic turned out to be all about marijuana, so it was, it was interesting. It was, there was not a lot of new information. It was a lot of what has been said at some of the recent seminars, but the representative from the Attorney General's Office said they have about 27 applications pending. Most of them are moratorium articles, bylaw, moratorium bylaws, which is what we put in place in May, and it obviously has to go through the Attorney General process. So, since ours was so recent, that it's probably not even included in that group that she was referring to, but some of them are bylaws to ban sales of recreational marijuana. So, I think as we go through the summer months, we should probably be talking more about that and moving more in that direction to be focused on submitting something with the planning board for the Fall Town Meeting. But it was an interesting update that everyone is still waiting for guidance from the state, so there weren't a lot of new developments, but everyone's anxious to hear how the legislation is going to clean up the ballot question that passed last November, which creates some really ambiguities, as we've talked about in the past.
Well, I know on that topic, I saw that there was some concern in the city of Boston that there, that suburban towns are actively pursuing the opportunity, and so basically they're feeling the brunt of the marijuana industry right now.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
As far as the applications for.
Correct business, yes.
Right. Is it an offshoot to what you just said, Katie? I don't know what community I was cutting through the other day, and I saw the signs. It's obviously one of these communities was out like towards Walpole, so they actually had signs, like we have our override signs to outright ban marijuana sales. So, it was for their upcoming town meeting. So, they must be facing the same, they want to try and make a move from a town perspective to just outlaw, to try and trump what the vote has passed. And I think going back to what you just said about that, if you look at our Coalition on Narcotics and the work that they're all doing here, this isn't going to help that issue.
No, it's not.
It's not going to help it.
And they, and some of them have been at some of the conferences. Caroline Consella from Health Department, Laurie Stillman, Deborah Milbar, they've been at some of the conferences. So, I think as we get into the summer, we'll probably want to be working more with them as well as the planning board on what the next steps are. But we still need some guidance from the state in order to know where the legislature is going with the acts. Hopefully, hopefully they will be enacted to really clarify what some of these uncertainties are, that the ballot question created.
Right.
But that's all I had.
I just want to, first, I want to thank you, David, for mentioning, I don't know if my wife watches this, but with Brian Maroney, she, one of the girls' coaches, it's a big thing to her. They've been together now, I think this is their fourth year in girls' softball. You know, I was at, I said to Michael before we came in, it's funny how big sports are. I was at one of Molly's games at Cunningham in the upper field Saturday afternoon, and if you listen to what was going on at the new book, because I walked down, you'd have thought it was Fenway Park.
Yep.
It was just that. And again, when you look around all the families and all the people that are involved, and how many people, like amames, or how many coaches in this town. And I said this a lot to Kevin Crislim during the campaign, how many parents give themselves on behalf of the kids in this town. It really does say a lot. And going back to, I didn't mean to mention this, but, you know, we all went to the kickoff for the override, and this is a tough thing, and I think that I need to say something about this because we need to maximize flying the flag when we can, and right now we're on TV. And, you know, we could have had a $5 million. I'm sure if we put our heads in, there could have been a $5 million override to really give us the things that all the department heads needed. But it's a $3 million override. But it's a $3 million override that affects our kids, ourselves, our parents, grandparents, the seniors, everyone, and the kids who are just coming into this world now. Because the vote that we take supports the foundation of everything in this town, from the person who calls 911 in a crisis to the kid who's going to the ball field who hopes that the grass is cut, the trash is picked up, to the students in all of our schools, to the cemetery that we may wind up in at the end. All of the aspects of town services, I said, are like the bricks that make the foundation of our house, and that's why it's really so, it's easy to say no and not do this. It really is. It would be easy, ah, well, we don't want to pay any more taxes. But this override and the dollars that is going to sustain back into our operating budget is what's going to help make Milton the way it is today. And that's a hard thing to do. And we sitting, and you've been here longer than me, and me being the newest member here, I understand that. And I say this to everyone out there who's listening, everyone who watches this TV show, whether you're at the Council on Aging, the Colly Court School, or cutting the grass at Center Street. What we're trying to do here on June 20th is put forward a positive vote for the benefit of all of us, each and every one of us. And that's really what my report is tonight, that it's about our businesses. I want to give a shout out just before, go to Dar Elliot, the new president of the.
Chamber.
I went to his meeting. He had a great get-together the other night, President of the Chamber, he had over at Navara, and you could tell just by listening to, and I talked to him that night when we were at Steal and Ride, the kickoff. It'd be easy for these people to just go, ah, whatever, but they care. And the fact that so many people do care, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to fight for them, to fight for our community, to make it remain as great as it is. We're going to have our problems. We're going to have our issues. He's not always going to write good stories. Some are going to be tough stories. But the fact that if we could communicate it and talk about it and listen, that's what makes Milton what it is. So, that's my report for tonight, more than what I intended to say.
But I think it's very well said, Richard, and just to piggyback off that, we're reinvesting in our future.
We are.
And you know what? My parents did that for us when we were kids.
Right.
And it's called paying it forward, and I think that it's time to do so. And I think that we're fortunate to live in a community like this, as you've said, that understands the value of it. It would be easy to say no, but I think that people should really think about the ramifications if they did say no.
One of the things that I was very impressed with that night when we went to Steal and Ride, having been in other override committees and been there and seen the people that have sat in this room in the past, way before any of us, and people who fought to get us to where we are today, but I was absolutely heartened by all these young families that were there that night, that were rolling up their sleeves and taking an active measure in this in their community, and they understood it, and they're out there fighting for it, and they're holding signs, and they're raising money, and they're fighting for their homes, and I think we have to be right there in that fight with them.
There's clearly something for everyone. I think there's no question about that.
It was well-attended that night also.
It was.
And there's a lot of information available publicly. There's information on the town website. There's the Milton for All website. There's a lot of information if people do have questions, and there's also the calculator on the town website. That's still up, Mike, right?
Residential tax calculator is on the main page.
So, anybody can go in and plug in their assessed value, and that will tell them what the dollar impact would be on them of the override. So, lots of information out there that people should avail themselves of.
And the other thing too is someone wrote, I don't know where I read this, and one of the, you know, against was that, you know, they'll be looking for an override every year. It's been eight years, and you said it, and I agree with you. You said it when it's Steal and Ride. I hope we never have one. And it's issues like that are going on now, like the Ice House and Carberry and Hendry, although Hendry's has taken a long time, but it's all of them. It's these collective enhancements to our community that are going to bring more tax dollars in and keep that from happening again for a long time, hopefully. And, I mean, just look at the square now, even though it has a lot, but Navara and Abbey Park and all these things, the Plaids, Steal and Ride, all these, the Milton Marketplace, and the thing that we might have, you know, another one on the west side of town, those are all going to be things. One of the things that I noticed is how many realtors have been paying attention to all of us, all of us. The night that you spoke, I wasn't even on the board yet, the night that you spoke with Mary Gormley at the high school to present the entire budget.
The auditorium, yeah.
There were two realtors sitting beside me. All they were doing was numbers, projecting numbers, house values, what things, and they understood that as tough as it is, these are things that are going to help to continue to make Milton the great community it is to very much sought after, to live in. So, I've talked enough for tonight.
No, that was great. No, we appreciate it, and I think that the viewers appreciate it as well. Future, I'm sorry, Citizen Speak, we didn't have anyone, so we don't have any response. Future agenda items?
Can I just add one thing before we get to future agenda items? Speaking of the Milton Parkland Recreation and the great things they do, the 2017 Summer Concert Series starts out here in the gazebo. Let's hope for good weather. This Wednesday, 6 o'clock to 7:30. Cover is fancy, sponsored by Congressman Lynch and Congressman Capuano. Is our first one. Let's hope for some sunshine.
They're great. Boy, those concerts are unbelievable. People line up early. You better get there early because they've got their lawn chairs out and lots of kids running around with snacks, and sure to have a good time. So, yeah, let's hope for good weather. I think we've had enough bad weather to know that we're probably going to get a lot of great weather coming forward. Statistically proven, I think.
Those concerts, the farmer's market, usually a sign of summer. So, good news.
The farmer's market is June 15th, I think.
It's coming up.
He said it. Jean Boylan said it. Is that a Wednesday? He said it when we were at Steal and Ride.
Do you want to give an update on the big day up on Hedenson's?
Oh, I forgot about that. So, we have Milton Music Fest. I hope Lynda Lee Sharon's watching. Milton Music Festival, which is a very big, it's about 5,000 people, 10 each year, is Sunday. This is the 50th for Saturday Night Fireworks, 40th for Celtic Sunday, is the 24th and 25th, and it's in the planning stage, and there's been some great supporters of this, and looking forward for a great weekend is, once again, it's quite a fireworks show. I never thought we'd have fireworks. I still can't believe it is, but.
And it's free for all residents?
It's free, yeah, it's free. There's no cost, just.
Which is the best deal in town.
There's some great things. If you go to the website, weonmilton.org, that comes from the 350th. That was, that's where Milton Music Fest comes from. Everything from a giant sandbox, games for kids, cornhole games. There's just, and six hours of music on Saturday, I think, another seven hours of music on Sunday.
Wow.
So, a big stage, so. Thanks for reminding us.
Thanks to the committee.
Yeah.
Putting such a great event every year to our town, so it's awesome. Okay, so now I'm going to call to.
Can we just get to future agenda items? Could we stop there for a minute?
Yeah, sorry.
I think we just need to add, as we go into the summer agendas, town meeting articles for the fall, because we probably only have three meetings before we hit August, and then.
Good point.
I'm not sure when in August the warrant closes, whether it's early or late. I don't recall since, we didn't have an October town meeting last year, but we're going to have to be thinking about that as we go through the summer months and working on those articles.
Who sets, do we set the date, or does the town clerk set that? Who sets the date for?
Town meeting in the fall is on the last Monday of October.
October, okay.
We just have to pick a date that makes sense. I mean, Emily will usually give us a schedule backing out how much notice you have to give to, the warrant has to be in the households, so then you back it out from there, and we need to build in enough time for the warrant committee to do their work. So, it's usually sometime like middle October, middle of August, but.
August, yeah.
And with the Labor Day holiday, and we never want to overburn the warrant committee with too little time in order to get it to the printer.
Okay.
I know the planning board's working on some articles, and we could well have marijuana. We talked before about noise and resurrecting that, so.
Noise bylaw, sure.
Yes.
Was your feeling on the marijuana supposedly, do you think that there'll be regulations out in time for us to have something for the October town meeting from the state level?
I'm not sure what will happen at the state and how quickly that will happen, but a lot of communities are looking at going forward with the bylaw, because the deadlines, we're up against a deadline. I think it's April, I don't have my notes on it, but I think it's April 1st of 2018 when the.
On the state level.
When the new state entity that's being formed, the control board, when they can start taking applications and then going forward promoting regulations. So, there's a series of dates in 2018 that start kicking in, and the guidance was really to start thinking about bylaws and getting them before town meeting. You also have to have an election, unless the state legislature changes the law to clarify, you only need one or the other. But right now, you need both an election and a bylaw, but the bylaw is the big thing. The election can happen afterwards. They told us at the Congress that bylaw is the big thing before the 2018 deadlines start coming into play.
Was there like a boilerplate or a proposed one that they liked, that they want you to?
Well, I've been working with town councils, colleague Brandon Moss, who gave us some samples that they're working on for other communities, and as the AG approves some of them, all the town councils get copies of the letters.
The ones that are approved.
Yes, and then we can use those, so we, at least we have comfort knowing that the Attorney General's already approved those. We could use those as our model. So, there are some samples that we can start working from, and they're pretty straightforward. They're not long detailed zoning articles like the Ice House.
Right.
They're very short.
Okay.
It's really just a straight-out prohibition.
Are there any pending? I know you had one before I came on, the Red House. Is there anything like that pending now? None, okay.
Which one did you mention, Richard?
The Swift House.
Oh, the Swift House, yes.
Nothing pending, no.
Nothing, so.
No more asks, yeah.
All right. At this time, I'd like to call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. Ms. Conlon?
Yeah, are we, do you mean to make the motion?
Yeah, well, we're requesting, there's been a donation request from Susan Swanson, the Activities Coordinator, from Uncity House, Milton. They submitted a request for a donation from the Governor Stoughton Trust to help us lower, help low-income residents who experience food insecurity as they're unable to fully provide for themselves. So, they made a request for $5,000. However, Mrs. Swanson has noted that any contribution would be gratefully accepted. So, the balance of our fund now is $297,497.48. So, with that being said, I think we can have a discussion.
Yeah. I, you know, we've been concerned in the past that this has been dwindling, but the planning board has issued a permit, a special permit for Pulte, so this project really should be moving along so that we sooner rather than later should be realizing the $5 million sale proceeds. And I don't know if there's any update on when that might be projected to be, but I guess as one member of the board, I'd be comfortable with $5,000 for Uncity House based on the letter they've submitted, knowing that we are very likely going to be increasing the balance of this fund substantially in the near future.
Yeah, I'd be in favor as well. I think that, you know, I think all of us at this table know how difficult it is for seniors. It's a very difficult time. A lot of people on fixed income, lower income, and any relief that we can provide right now, especially knowing that we're going to have more money coming forward in the soon, in the future, then I think it's our responsibility to do so.
Hey, Greg.
Go ahead.
Hi, it's a no-brainer.
So, I'll move that we approve a donation to the Uncity House, Milton, in the amount of $5,000 to provide meal assistance to its needy residents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this time, I'm going to move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to union personnel, the firefighters' union, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position, and to return to open session to adjourn. Mr. Wells?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
We are now in executive session.
Thank you.